Call the City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining?
Here.
Germaine?
Here.
Lemoore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
As she's excused.
Eiko Angeli?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have faith and hope in each other in our democratic form of government. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here. We ask you to work for the welfare of this community and all of its residents.
Joining us this evening is the Boy Scouts from Troop 519, and then Nicholas is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Nicholas, call your troops.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Nicholas and Troop 519. It's great to see you all here this evening. I know that you're part of your role of seeing the city government and earning your merit badges and learning and hearing from us, so welcome. Clerk Treasure.
I wanted to mention before I go on, there seems to be a problem with my microphone, so for the people at home, if you can't hear me, we're aware of the problem and we're trying to fix it.
Thank you.
The next item on this evening's agenda is an option to amend tonight's agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to relocate or move item number 1962 under Council Action, which is number six, and make that the first item under Council Action.
Second. Motion by Council Mike Angeli supported by Councilwoman Lemoore that item 1962, the resolution recognizing SEMCOG's 50th anniversary moves from the consent agenda but placed under Council Action. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item are citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. Any comments from those present here this evening that wish to be made not related to an agenda item? Comments from those present. Yes, please stand forward, name and address and your topic.
Hi, I'm Kaylani Raffco Wilson, 4916 Frary Lane in Monroe, Michigan, 48161. It's my pleasure, my honor to be here tonight. I know most of our City Council members are familiar with the event that we have, but thank you, Mayor and Council members, for allowing me to speak. I'm here to talk about a really special event that is coming up next Wednesday on March 14th at the Knights of Columbus Lounge, and it's the, actually put on, I brought a flyer here, put on by the Insurance Association of Monroe County Foundation, and it's an educational scholarship that is given in memory of my brother Nick, and we are in our ninth year. Tickets are $15 to come and grab some good eats and also get a chance to meet the wonderful Lomis Brown, a former Detroit Lion player, so we're just so blessed to be able to have him come to our community. Tickets are $15, and the event runs from 6:00 to 9:00, and we've got great sponsors, but I reach out to the community and the City Council, Mayor. If any of you would like to attend, you can call Ken Miller at (248) 514-8494, or visit us on Facebook. So, I think that's it.
Thank you, Kaylani. What's the date again, please?
March 14th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Knights of Columbus Lounge, and tickets are $15.
Thank you. You know, educational scholarship program is what started that nine years ago, and opportunities for students to receive a little support as they move on from high school to college.
Right, and thank you, Mayor. The other thing I think is just so wonderful is every high school senior athlete is eligible for this scholarship, and we provide three every year. So it's just a wonderful opportunity, and I come from a family where it was really difficult to be able to pay for that education, and just a chance to have a great evening and give back to our high school seniors throughout our county, so every high school senior athlete in all school districts are eligible.
Thanks, Kaylani. It's good to see you again. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Other comments not related to an agenda item. See you none. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item 1962, which is a resolution recognizing SEMCOG's 50th anniversary.
Right. Your Councilman?
Yes, Your Honor, I recommend that we accept, place, and file, and the resolution be adopted.
Second. There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore supported by Councilwoman Germaine to accept the resolution. I'm going to do a presentation before we take the vote, because I'd like to speak with, we have a representative from SEMCOG here this evening, and, actually no, I think I'll take the vote first. That's what we should do. There's a motion in the second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Now, I'd like to do a presentation. So Amy Malmer, who's the SEMCOG membership manager, is here. I'm going to come down to the podium and ask her to join me so I can talk a little bit about SEMCOG, which is Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and what a great role they play for local government in all of Southeast Michigan, and why we have this resolution celebrating their 50th year as an organization, so I'm going to ask Amy to join me there. See you.
Good to see you.
So, those that may not know about SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and this is their 50th year, so the resolution speaks to their 50 years, one region, and SEMCOG's is, of course, in 1968 when the voluntary council governments formed to how to do regional governance, and how to come together and look at how they collectively, governments can operate much better than individually, and 59 charter members started back in 1968, and today there's over 170 members in Southeast Michigan through the several counties. And SEMCOG started, I think, back in the old, before SEMCOG even formed, there's the Regional Planning Commission, TALUS, which is Transportation Land Use Study, and then the Inter County Committee, and all these came together and realized that collectively they would do better than separate, and so we have a proclamation, or I'm sorry, a resolution to present to SEMCOG. You know, they started this years ago, and the idea is a working, implement a vision, and it formed SEMCOG bylaws, you know, efficient use of dollars when we talk about infrastructure projects, federal dollars that come in, and how we spread that across and work together, developing regional solutions, and we've, earlier in our work session today, we talked about a few of those House bills and Senate bills and discussions going on in Lansing, how SEMCOG collectively can have a voice in helping to form those statewide policies, and also advocating on behalf of Southeast Michigan. One of the things about SEMCOG is regional planning and data, and there's not a better place I can think of when you talk about how to get data and start to analyze what you're going to do as an individual government and think regionally of delivering, you're, doing your planning sessions with efficient management and infrastructure. Traffic safety has been a long, consistent theme with SEMCOG, and they talk about transportation and public safety or in traffic safety, and also one of the components that SEMCOG has that many others do not have is the component of education. So not only do we have, you know, townships and cities and counties, we also have an educational component where the community college, including Monroe County Community College, is a member of SEMCOG, and then we have the business kind of arm of that, which is the Metropolitan Affairs Coalition as well. So I want to give a little background. Hopefully I didn't take anything that Amy wanted to say, but I want to present this resolution signed by Council and ask that, I know they're going to be having greater celebrations through the, through, up through June and having this posted, so I want to thank Council for your support of SEMCOG, and Amy, so I want to present this to SEMCOG and say thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'll give you a chance to say what you wish here.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for honoring SEMCOG with this resolution in this milestone year. We really appreciate that. I wanted to let you know that the Detroit Historical Museum is hosting an exhibit about Southeast Michigan and about 50 years of local governments working collaboratively, and as a part of that interactive exhibit, the River Raysen National Battlefield is highlighted as a significant regional asset, and the exhibit is open until April 8th, so I'd invite you all to come up to Detroit and visit that exhibit. I think you'll enjoy it. Also want to invite all of you to what will be our signature celebration event this year on June 28th. It's our annual meeting, and it will be at Little Caesar's Arena, so we are looking forward to kind of capping off our 50th anniversary celebrations at that time. That's all I wanted to say. Again, thank you for the resolution, and thanks to Mayor Clark for representing the greater Monroe community throughout the region and for being such a great ambassador on behalf of SEMCOG. Thanks.
Thank you.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is also under Council Action, item 1963, City Council 2018-2019 Goals and Objectives.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Your Honor, requesting tonight, Council to consider adoption of the goals and objectives that were formulated at the start of the session on Saturday, January 27th. Incorporated many of the comments that have been received into this, the one item that we struggled with, dealt with F6 on the goals, environmental and public health stewardship, and based on my understanding as to the discussion, I made the change that Ray Reed's embrace the responsibility of environmental and public health stewardship by complying with state and federal regulations, along with promoting and participating in environmental cleanup and awareness programs. You know, as we discussed, we know that with our wastewater NPDS permit, and then earlier in the work session, we discussed some of the lead, lead and copper regulations, that we certainly will embrace that responsibility, as well as ongoing, the good work that's been taking place, you know, with our Commission on the Environment, and more recently, the grant application that the Council approved to study further with the Coastal Management Program, trying to reduce the portaging along the River Raysen, so it's within that context, I think, in the spirit that, you know, I made the change with the discussion that we had had, so.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, place, and file the recommendation to adopt the 2018-2019 Goals and Objectives.
Second. motion by Councilman, Eiko Angeli supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, to accept and place on file a recommendation regarding 1963, the City Council 2018-19 Goals and Objectives. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is this evening's consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $1,756,717.67, 1756-717.67.
Any items on the consent agenda that Council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda from the Council? See you none. Is there any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? See you none. A motion would be in order.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendations and resolutions carried out.
Second. motion by Councilman, Eiko Angeli supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, on the consent agenda that all items be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
I have no further items.
So we'll start with Council comments, and we'll have to talk to the Scouts here afterwards. It is March, so Councilwoman Vining.
No comment, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Germaine?
Yes, I'd like to place on record with the proposal of the coming lease agreement with Lake Erie Transit. I'm an employee at Lake Erie Transit. Most of you probably know that I'm the operations manager, so with that said, I had discussion with Mr. Budz. I will be abstaining from the vote coming up the next two weeks. But any Council member that has any questions, feel free to come to 7th Street, and we'll show you the software and how we come up with the numbers.
Good, thank you. Other comments?
No.
Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yes, Your Honor. Just to briefly go over a few things that we had in the work session, Pat Lewis, our engineering director, wanted to note to everybody out there that make sure if you wish for a recycling bin with a new 64-gallon wheeled bins, make sure you put an old bin out the day, let's see, the week of March 26th. He also mentioned that April 2nd, the week of April 2nd, the yard waste collection will begin, and that as of May 7th, the unlimited collection will be taken as waste. Also want to shout out again, what Mrs. Raffco Wilson brought up was the Nick Raffco Scholarship Fund promoted by Insurance Association of Monroe County Foundation. Let's keep that on our calendar for March 14th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Monroe KFC. I believe there were three scholarships sent out last year for $500 each, so it is definitely a worthwhile investment for students to look into something like this, local high school athletes, looking into those, those are definitely beneficial to their future. I also want to shout out to our Troop 519. I have personal connections to them. Both of my boys are Eagle Scouts, and they both were brought up and tutored by Mr. Polter, Jeff Polter here, so I appreciate all of his efforts with the Boy Scouts in Monroe, and I don't think you're going to find a more outstanding troop leader throughout Monroe County, throughout the state of Michigan for that matter. He put his heart and soul into that troop, and I cannot give him enough accolades for what he's done for this troop here, as well as scouting in Monroe County, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
My son said "Dada" this week, and I find it absolutely critical that the community be aware of that. In all fairness, he did say "Mama" last week, so.
So you're number two.
It's the boat on that one, but apart from that, I have no comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council Mike Angeli?
All pass, Your Honor.
Well, I just have a couple of comments. First, one of the items that we, was early in our agenda, was about the City Council's goals and objectives. I want to thank the City Council for the time and efforts put into that, reviewing those, as we kind of say hone those down into where it's real direct statements, but I also want to thank the administration and City Manager Pastu for compiling all our thoughts in the end as we gave those suggestions and to meet, gives us a pathway over the next two years, what we're looking for and what we think to be priorities, and those will be posted in the council chambers. They'll replace the ones that are currently posted on the outside of the, as you walk in here. But there'll also be, I know they're in the City Manager's office, and you'll see those elsewhere within City Hall and on our website, so everybody can understand what the goals and objectives for the city are, so again, thank you for that support. And one of the items that we talk about, kind of history and tradition, City Monroe has a sister city, Ho Fu Japan, and we are celebrating our 25th anniversary this year. We're going to talk about that a little bit more the next month coming up, but right now I make the announcement because we send five students to Japan, and five Japanese students come to Monroe during the summer, usually in August, over a three-to-four week period, and it's a great opportunity, and that's coming, the applications can still be completed. You need to get a hold of the, what's called the Monroe International Friendship Association, MIFA, M-I-F-A, and Ms. Kim Steve is the point of contact, and the idea is that students in high school have an opportunity to journey for both an educational and cultural opportunity. So we're in our 25th anniversary, one of the more successful sister cities, not only in the state but around the country, when you talk about over 220-some students have had the opportunity to travel and learn and become broader in perspective in this broad world that we have, that isn't just our own community. It's not our own state, our own country, but very wide. So I mentioned that tonight because the interviews will be coming up the following week, but there's still time for those that might have an interest to submit an application, and if you have difficulty locating that, you can always call at the Mayor's Office at (734) 384-9144, and we can make sure that you have an application to get submitted if you wish to be interviewed, and join many of the other students that have journeyed to our sister city. I also want to give thanks to Boy Scouts Troop 519 and Mr. Polter for being here. I think it's a great opportunity to see the Scouts. We hope to see you back again sometime, maybe just because you want to listen or an item that comes up the agenda. The agenda was kind of shorter today, so, but that doesn't mean you can't come and talk to us afterwards if you have a question like, how did this pass, or what was this really about? But I also, under the, as I finish my comments and go to the clerk, we have citizens' comments at time at the end of the meeting as well, and I would hope that maybe somebody want to just give us a minute or two about 519 and things that are working, whether it's Mr. Polter, or of course, Nick, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, not to put you on the spot, young man, but maybe one of you want to come up and just kind of talk about the things you're doing and why it's important to be here tonight, what that, what that role is within Troop 519, and maybe one of your Scout Masters will do that. So with that, Clerk Treasure Lavoy.
I have no comments this evening.
No comments? Mr. Pastu?
Nothing.
Okay. Next item is?
Citizen comments.
Citizens' comments. So, anybody here wish to speak this evening, present this evening and wish to speak? Now's the opportunity. Somebody from 519 is going to speak. There's the volunteer. Yeah, General Cum, we'd like to know about Troop 519, and you're here for a purpose this evening, and we thank you for leading us in the pledge. Your name, please.
My name is Jacob Volkrod, and yeah, I wasn't expecting to come up here, so, I'm a little stuck for words, but um, yeah, scouting in Monroe, I know that we do a lot of things around Monroe, either monthly or bimonthly. We participate in God Works, so we help with the soup kitchen.
Well, I can tell, I know that you've assisted in some of our downtown cleanups, the River Walk. I see you in the fall at the, and when we, as we clean the river, but your attendance here this evening, is that one of the tasks or assignments that you have throughout the year, or what may be some of the other ones as well, and why here tonight?
Yeah, so everybody here is working on their citizenship and the community merit badge, and one of our requirements is to participate and observe a City Council meeting, so we also talk about differences between duties, obligations, responsibilities, privileges, that kind of stuff within our community in specific, and we also are going to, we have to, using a map of Monroe, locate all the different important points of interest, such as like, obviously, City Council, building, schools, that kind of thing. Yeah.
As you get to your citizen, community, well, badge, or as you before, what's the next, what, you know what your next task or might be?
The merit badges aren't exactly like linear, but there are, there are multiple citizenship merit badges, so on the smaller scale, there's citizenship in the community, but there's also citizenship in the nation and citizenship in the world, and all three of those are required to earn the rank of Eagle Scout.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for being here, and I'm sure what, you're always welcome to come back, and look forward to seeing you through the year and the summer, and I know you're out volunteering, so thank you much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening? See you none?
We have one, Mayor.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Polter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Polter, 648 Borges Avenue. Actually, right now, I'm a committee member for Troop 519. Mr. Lemoore gave me a great shout-out, so I think I need to return the favor. Want to talk about scouting in Monroe and scouting in general, and everybody's opportunity to participate in scouting. Scouting doesn't exist without volunteers, and Mr. Lemoore and I, a good number of years ago, got together with three other fathers and founded this, this troop out of really nothing. We had five borrowed tents and, and a couple of water buckets, and that's pretty much what we founded Troop 519 on. We grew to quite a, quite an established troop, and as of today, there are 16 Eagle Scouts. We had, uh, five borrowed tents and, and a couple of, uh, water buckets, and that's pretty much what we founded Troop 519 on. We grew to quite a, quite an established troop, and as of today, uh, there are 16 Eagle Scouts, uh, in Troop 519. That's quite of an accomplishment, but it comes down to the fact that, um, we need volunteers. We need people who are willing to give their time, not only dads, but moms. Give their time to the organization and spend a little time and effort and, and go on the outings and, and go to meetings and, and participate with your children. And not only in scouting, but there's other organizations and other, other wonderful organizations where parents can get involved with, with their children. So, I would recommend that, that you take a look at these boys here and see how, how much their lives have changed because, um, leaders and adults get involved. And so, uh, I'm very thankful for Mr. Lemoore and, um, getting involved with the city council and helping us many years ago, um, found this troop. Um, the boys here, again, are, are here for citizenship and the community merit badge. Uh, we have a couple of boys here that are working on their Eagle badge. Um, some, hopefully, Jacob will, will be getting his Eagle badge quite rather shortly, and Nicholas also is shortly going to be working on his Eagle badge. So, we're very proud of these boys. We're very proud of what they've accomplished and what they've, what they've done here tonight in, in being a participant in their community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Volunteerism of the heart and soul of any community, I is a firm believer in that, and I think that your, your volunteerism and, also yours, Jeff, is much appreciated for all the, uh, the students, but also the, uh, the adults are, are part of the troop. So, thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? Seeing none?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for city attorney update and land acquisition.
Second, motion by Council Mike Angeli, supported by Councilman Lemoore, go into closed executive session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.